So, I mean, that's why we wanted to go back up to thirty and we get these guys really going and, and we done just that. I mean, they're, they're ready and they're already all certified and, and they're ready to go. So, we have thirty strong firefighters right now in our department.
And, so, if I could get a motion to go to thirty this year?
I would make that motion. I fought for that last year. So, I would make the motion to do the thirty for this year. Paul seconded that.
Sarah seconded. Jack, he makes motion. Sarah seconded. That is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried to go to thirty, to five fifty for thirty.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we do, and like Jackie said, I remember she did bring it up last year. We do really appreciate everything that you guys do too, Steve. Thank you. Obviously, we want to be a part of that.
Yeah, thank you. So, and like always, I end with, our meetings are at eight o'clock. And I know, John, you've attended a few, but it's really open to the public and we'd really ask that you do try and at least attend to one. We do so much more than just fight fire down here at our fire department. We, we're in the community all the time. And that's the way that you will see that. And it's just a good atmosphere to put yourself into.
It, it really was an eye opener for me. The first one I, I went to, and I tried to do like three or four, three or four of my year. It's amazing the, the charities that they give money to with their charitable gambling and the money they raise. And, and I'll walk by the fire department and, and they'll be having the great schools over there showing them how the, how the pumps all work and how the fire trucks work. And it just really actually honored them. So, it, they are great meetings.
Yeah, thank you.
It was great that one year we got the mayor to be Santa.
Yeah.
I'll start eating, I'll start eating tomorrow.
Fire department, fire department, why are on all town?
All right. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Yeah. So, the next one, let's, let's have Dan Rushlow, he can come up here and kind of give us some data.
So, just one more thing, John. I need at least one of these copies back and signing.
Here, I just did it. Here. No, I have it. I just wanted.
And then I just drop you in minutes, so we'll, we'll sign it and get them out. I just go.
Oh, thank you, Steve.
Okay, all right. Yes, good evening. Um, I guess every year I like to come in, Dan, and say, and we just kind of give you an update. Uh, we got our twenty twenty-three report finally finished. Uh, I believe everything's the same in the leadership area. Phil Scrivener's still assistant. John Lucian is captain. Scott Sage, safety training officer. Dustin Betson here is secretary. Jason Lee is the assistant secretary at this time. Well, just a little bit of history there. Appears it's pretty big response area, five hundred square, eighty square miles. Population eighty-eight hundred residents and showed you all the townships we cover. And of course, you know, we go on the growing county, you can township, so. Just a little recap. In twenty twenty-three, it had sixty-nine calls. And there's one number that kind of stood out to me. The total value lost is two point six million. And that, some people ask, well, how do you know it's that much? But, so every fire we go to, we have to fill out a min, it's a min fire. It's a state fire report that we have to fill out. And we have to kind of do guesstimates on property loss. The value. So, I mean, it's kind of a guesstimate, but last year was two point six million. And in twenty twenty-two, it was one million, just over a million. So, that was quite a, you know, everything went up, I guess you could say, too. But, so that kind of stood out to me. We had a few less calls, but hard to believe we had a grass fire call already and it's only February. Sorry.
Really?
So, and if we, if it doesn't rain or snow, it's going to be very busy, I would say, on, on that end. But hopefully, we get some moisture. Um, and it just kind of breaks down each, uh, township, you know, the calls we had, what kind of calls we had in each one. Um, the city appears here, we had a total of ten calls. Um, we had a couple of gas leaks, power line down. Uh, I think we had a sister Eric with a, maybe a death removal, some wiring. We actually only had one false alarm. That's kind of crazy that we, you know, you would think you'd have more, but that was, that's, that's down pretty bit. So, that was good. Couple of accidents and alarm. No, I don't should have asked Dustin. So, here's a false, oh, alarm that we actually responded to. So, I guess we did have three of them. But that's like. Uh, this is a city. So, then it just breaks down every township, uh, what we did. And then, then last year, we got that new truck that you guys were very much involved in, uh, the tanker pumper. We got that into service, uh, replaced our ninety-four tanker. That was a huge, huge, uh, upgrade for us because it's a tanker pumper. Um, so you can actually, we could pull up to a scene and start pumping and actually do interior attack with it because it has PTO pump. So, that's a huge, you know, if something would go wrong with their main pumper or whatever, it's, it's a very, it was put together very good and it costs a lot. But in the end, it's going to save on the, on your insurance rates and things, too. So, hopefully that, that should help. Um, we got new turnout gear. Um, we were trying and trying for the FEMA grant, but of course, we never got it. And NFPA standards is every ten years it has to be replaced. And trust me, we were way over on some of it. Some of the gear, like new guys coming in, I, I mean, I don't know. Lot of older people were wearing that. So, luckily, everybody now has up-to-date turnout gear and it's very good. Guys love it. So, we're great. And that was between us three that really helped, too. So, that made it a little easier for everybody. And we also got a grant for eight thousand from the state, Minnesota State Fire Department Association. I applied for a grant. We got eight grand for two sets of turnout gear. So, it would a little bit helps, I guess. And then finally, uh, our truck that I think we ordered two years ago, our pickup that's going to replace towel is in. It's actually in and heavy, but we're gonna run up there this week or next week and grab it. Get the painting and get the lights and stuff put in and then we'll get that into service. So, that's another great addition. Another thing I like to bring up, Dan Olakowski from Pioneer Seed, he put in a grant for us in the amount of five thousand dollars. And we were awarded that also. And that's mostly for like grain bin rescue. We got a bunch of new ropes and we got a new Stokes basket. If you get the party out of the, you're caught inside. So, that's a great, uh, great addition. And we also got, got a grant from one on it here. I don't even know how to pronounce it. It's the gas, the main gas thing that goes through here, just west of town. We got a grant for five thousand dollars from them. And for the rest of that, we're going to use our fire relief funds. But we're going to get new, uh, equipment, air bags, rescue bags. So, the ones that we have are fairly, fairly old. They don't work with their air tanks. So, um, they were just ordered this Monday. So, that'll be another great addition, uh, to the department. Anybody have anything, any questions on the report?
I, I was just going to say, you guys, um, we, uh, we were working with Pratt, but we didn't know when that, when the truck was going to come in. Remember, it's like a scoop and we get up, it was going to be a year or so.
Yeah.
And then I, then I saw our, I looked over our payables last month. There was a fifty-two thousand dollar payment made to, uh, for, for the pickup truck. So, I clearly had to come in.
Yeah. I just put that in my phone.
This is all. And then, uh, uh, so what we're going to do then is, uh, we're going to bill back a payment mutual. And then they cover, uh, they cover half it. So, they'll give us a check back for twenty-six thousand. And then there's going to be some of the other detailing that we talked about. I think it's going to come out of charitable gambling or.
Most of it, yeah.
Yeah. So, so they're going to cover some of that right at the fire department, too. But I just want to let you know in case you guys saw that, uh.
Yep. Questions? I guess the other thing, do you guys understand that training every month? You know, we get reimbursed for all that. I don't know if you guys see that on payables. We pay fire in.
Yeah, I see some stuff, but I don't look at the numbers that.
So, but that's all reimbursed through the state. So, it's kind of, you know, we pay it out, we get it in return. So.
I, I was just, I was going to say, Dan, that, uh, we, kind of like I told Steve to, I mean, I, I, I feel that our, our main objective as, as, what I hope in the city is having a good fire department and a good release department. Those are, you've got to have safety and security. Those should, should be the, are number one priorities. Everything else, everything else falls. Falls after that. So.
And that brings up a good point. So, every year, I don't know, some of you guys are business owners, but we do a national fire safety council. If you see them, requests come through and that money is donated directly to them. And then that's used for the training with the kids preschool up through second grade. So, I think this year, we already got like over six thousand donated from the businesses in the area. And that goes for like buying wristbands and little helmet, just stuff for the kid, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Nicknacks and stuff, whatever, not nicknames, but. So, I'm very lucky to have a great, uh, great department and a great area that supports it. No questions on that? Okay. And I do have one other thing. Um, at the fire hall, guys put a lot of time into it and a lot of donations were made. And I don't know if you see, like when they park at Frosty, there aren't people back up. Like two of them backed into the, into the hall. Um, I guess what we're requesting is if we could get like five more spots marked just for the fire department, that would at least get us past the AC unit. Because that's a very high price. Somebody did back into that last year and they, they just moved it. But they didn't break anything. So, a slick team came and set it. Luckily, nothing was damaged.
Do you need a motion for us to?
Well, yeah, I think, and I was talking with Eric at, at the city and, uh, is he here?
No.
Um, they, they might have some trouble with, with, uh, snow plowing. I guess they kind of push it around there a little bit. But anyhow, he thought maybe if we just put a sign on the last post, no parking, fire only, you know, like three spots or, I guess, the city owns a lot. And I just think it would, you know, in the long run, it might, and if it's a busy night and we get a call, you know, on those spots or we can't get to kind of congest.
What's funny is that I, I always just assumed it was for the fire hall anyway. Why'd you park there?
Not five spots.
See, there's signs to say for the fire. And I, and so why are people? I have no problem.
Dents in the wall. What I'm thinking, you guys, is that, uh, since Eric, I should have some input, you know, like he had one of the snow pluck. If we could just have a motion to approve it and then have, uh, Dan work it with Eric, however they want to do it.
I think that that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. So, Sarah make some motion.
And I'll second that. To do the five spots with, um, working with Eric to, to get the design.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. There you go. I think that's a great, that's good. Just, I mean, in the long run, I think.
I wish there was a way to enforce it, you know?
Well.
I mean, there is. I just wish people were just more considerate.
No. And sometimes you just need a reminder.
Do we have cameras? Kind of by a.
Yeah, we do have four of them under. Fire hall has the cameras, but at night they get, uh, we keep all shots and we can't. Can't really light their grate. You have to put more extra lights for the library and the fire hall.
We could maybe put a light on the side, but we maybe try that and see what happens.
It would be, actually, it would be a nice, good idea to.
Or at least a motion detector light, right? Or by the, at least by the camera.
Yeah, motion detector light. Yeah.
That'd be good.
You can look into it if you want.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I mean, look into it. We can improve the fast bits on, you know?
Yeah. Yep.
I think anything that can secure the city, the best that we can do.
Okay. Yeah. I actually, you know what? If that, if that's something you want to do, I'll actually donate one. I have an extra one and they work great. I got one at my house and on my land. And it's like two thousand moons. It's bright. And you can set for thirty seconds, one minute or a minute and a half that they stay on. It's all solar powered. So, it charges a battery. So, you don't have to do anything. Just put it on. Oh, yeah. They work great.
See if it'll work. And if you like it, we can work it on.
So, let me know if you want, if it works for you and I'll.
And the other last thing, I just, let's, I'd like to remember the officers, you know, that were killed last weekend. Uh, one was a fireman and, uh, of course, the other two were, were officers in law enforcement. But just never know, you know? Nowadays, it's a crazy world. So, but is that it? I'd like to thank you guys for all you do for us, too. I mean, we've got a great working relationship and seems to be working good. So, keep it going. Thank you.
So, Eric, is it okay if you wait, kind of review some of stuff? Okay. Um, first thing, uh, I guess next agenda would be the, the Freedom, Freedom Fest donation request. Um, here. I don't think so. He just created, I don't think I've been before. Um, so then, uh, for the Freedom Fest, so last year we donated a thousand dollars. And, um, I'm just looking for a thousand dollar motion to, to do what we did with Freedom Fest last.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty, you know, the one thousand dollar donation to Freedom Fest.
I'm going to think in a second.
Oh, second.
Sarah seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next one is for the Oktoberfest donation request. Um, it aims to, it's the fortieth anniversary for Oktoberfest. They're going to be doing some fireworks, some extra stuff this year. Normally, they request fifteen hundred. And, uh, they're asking for other five hundred dollars to help with fireworks. You get some other sources there, you know, to do months, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, we haven't had any real big donation requests yet this year. So, I would say that's fine. We can try to do our donation request in first bump for services. So, um, and then Laura, you'll have to just take a look at the other.
Oh, yeah.
There should be an Excel spreadsheet somewhere that says.
There is. We, our budget's ten thousand dollars. So, I was, yeah, I mentioned that, too. So, we got ten bucks. And there is a, there should be a, some, a printout or some.
There is somewhere.
But this is.
Eventually.
Jackie, I think this is the first ones for the year, the one, you know?
Either the first or that. Yeah, okay. But it does show a backlog of what we did for the last year. So, then you'll see. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, Sarah makes motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Jackie makes motion to second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. A motion carried for two thousand dollars for an Oktoberfest, uh, donation committee. Uh, the next one, uh, we are privileged to have Sarah Funk here, who is their community education coordinator, I believe. And she just wants to talk to us and she, uh, look at maybe, or she's been for a donation as well.
I am also looking for a donation. So, I'm Sarah Funk. I'm the community head director. And the reason that I reach out to the cities and the townships every year is to help support our summer rec programs. So, my goal as the director is that I provide activities for both youth and adults to bring our community together. And during the summer, um, my focus mo- mostly on our youth. So, we provide a variety of activities from tennis, basketball, volleyball, dance, gymnastics, art, music, science, cooking, ballet, gymnastics, baseball, softball. This year will add archery and theater will come back. So, I'm excited about that. Um, and the reason that I look for those donations is just to partner with the cities and the townships. I think in bigger cities, the city actually provides a lot of those rec programs at their parks. And so, I do that here in our community and we serve close to a thousand children. Some of that is duplicated because one child might be signed up for multiple activities. But between all of those activities all summer, we bring them in. Um, and so I use the donations to either reduce fees if a family can't afford to pay full price or, um, can't afford it. I don't want to turn a child away. And then I just use it to keep our, our fees low. I try to, um, keep them affordable so that lots of families can sign up. And then we always have the one activity. It's a big family event that takes place once a week and that is the all come track. So, that is families and parents, kids, they come and they're able to just do different track events. And that's always been free of charge.
When, when do you have that?
Because on Tuesday nights, it's at six o'clock. We're always looking for volunteers.
I was going to run in it. What are you talking about? Volunteer? About that all? Where do I go?
I think last year we held them in June. And then the year before that, they're actually in July. So, I'll post those out there for families to know. But we'll have free or partials. And we keep those free just so that families can come. They don't have to register. They don't have to prepay. We don't have to have someone collecting money. And, um, it's a nice way to bring a lot of people into town and to live here.
So, uh, Sarah Funk, I've had the privilege to play pickleball with her. She has it Sunday nights at the high school. And we got our first ever, I believe, pickleball tournament that couple of weekends ago.
Yeah.
How many people did you have on site up for that?
So, we were playing. I'm like, wouldn't it be fun to have a pickleball tournament? And then I realized how much work it was. We had forty-eight people. We had, um, four divisions with twenty, twenty-four teams.
Yeah, I really love it. But, and actually, um, Lydia, uh, who works for us, uh, won. She, she, I forget who her teammate was, but.
Her sister Marissa. Or was it in, in the women's?
Yeah, in the women's. They won the women's division, uh, Lydia and her sister did, which is fab- fantastic.
Yeah. We had a gentleman drive down from Grand Rapids to play. That's awesome.
Yep. Yep. So, uh, Sarah's looking for a donation of three thousand twenty-five dollars. Don't ask how the twenty-five dollars comes in there.
Can we just round it up to thirty-one hundred and like?
Is that easier to do?
Just round it up to thirty-one hundred.
So, the dollar amount is based on past dollar amount. And it was based on a per capita. Um, and I don't know what the formula was, honestly. Somebody else came up with that number.
We have a little bit more people.
Yeah, we'll go thirty-one hundred. Okay, so somebody can make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll get a second.
I'll second.
Motion care. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. A motion carried. That's for, uh, the community education for thirty-one, thirty-one hundred dollars.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you have any questions for it all? I forgot to ask you.
No, I think she just wonders. Now that we have the summer program for the kids, too, it's even more and more.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You did a great job.
They're, they're growing that. And they do an aftercare program as well through community that they started this year. My son would, he would be lost this time.
Oh, fantastic. That's great. Okay, so we have a, a cleanup date that potentially May eighteenth. Do you think, is that something Jackie?
Yeah. So, I kind of chatted a little bit with Laura. Um, we're going to have a meeting, um, on the books, hopefully, I would say, you know, early to mid-March. Um, so we'll need to get Eric involved, um, Eric Gaffey, myself, Gary, uh, Laura, Harold, and then Chris through the cleanup to kind of get, make sure like cost-wise, I mean, we have some pricing here. Um, but, and he said he would honor the pricing from twenty twenty-three. And all this list is twenty twenty-two. Um, I think it's not too much different. Um, so I would think that tentatively we could do that. We just have to make sure that, um, we can get them to come. This moment to make sure that it's, it's good.
Okay. Um, I was just going to say, typically, we wrap our citywide garage sale around, uh, that date.
Yep.
And normally that would work. Uh, the problem is, um, we're having a hard time getting volunteers. Jeanne, Nikki doesn't want to do the garage sale thing more. She was kind of back from that. Um, and obviously, we're all too busy. I don't want to stick anybody with having to put it, uh, put it together.
So, what I would suggest is that we probably do some sort of Facebook posts.
Exactly.
That we, you know, looking for somebody to head up the citywide garage sales. Um, if you're interested, the city is willing to provide, you know, printouts on maps. Um, but if you would like to, if somebody would like to head this up, please let us know. We're looking at the weekend of May, the weekend of May eighteenth kind of deal.
Paul Prisandilla said that she would put the flyers together like she did last year. Um, so she would help out on that end. And then to Glasser, Jack, we just printed them off here. She put them there.
Yeah, I mean, normally put them at the businesses. And I think we did a small thing in the, in the record.
Yep. So, Laura, is it okay if you put that on Facebook then?
Yeah, it's actually on my to-do list for tomorrow. Yeah.
So, that's kind of what my thought would be. Um, but I know that there is a grant. So, you'll be able to sign hopefully some documents for the grant. We do with Morrison County. So, they'll cover some of the costs associated with that. Um, so, and I, I know I'll be here Wednesday. So, I have some time slotted. So, maybe if we need to touch base, we can try to look together if we need to. Yeah. So, that would be, I would guess, make a motion to tentatively, um, have it for May eighteen.
Okay. So, I'll say, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. A motion carried for cleanup date for potentially for May eighteenth. Hopefully, uh, that's the last day of our garage sale. Um, the next item is, uh, city phone. Um, I'd like to table that. Laura's in the process of getting, uh, some prices for some phones that are in service. If you do, uh, like a group, a group thing and the city discovers everything. Um, I did talk to Zach and a couple of other employees and they're fine with if you just provide them, like phones. Um, the one thing, uh, with Zach requested, so just the general layout. And then if I, we talked a little bit about last, the supervisors would get, get, uh, phones. And then, so if Laura's going on vacation, uh, Dion can, she can give her phone to Dion to handle and like they're coming up. Um, and then Tony could give her phone to Lydia if she was going to be out. Um, Zach could get it, give his phone to Brad. So, the one thing that Zach said, they would like to have two phones, uh, Jackie, two company phones, just for the fact that they don't, if they're on the middle of a golf course, they want to run the club off and make a change on the water sprinkler. They forgot we got that, the water sprinkler system.
Yeah, I was thinking the maintenance that I.
You could. Yeah.
Yeah, Brad.
Yeah, so Brad will have them and then Zach.
And Zach, yeah.
Yeah. And then, so anyway, but until we get some prices, Laura's working on it. Um, I'd just like to table it for the.
Yeah. I'm good with that. I'll make a motion to table it. I'll second. Like I said, we have until the end of March to pay the stipend as it is. So, if that's something we do, we pay until the end of March. And then plans start, then maybe April first or whenever.
Okay, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. A motion carried to table the safe phones, uh, Laura, until the next, next meeting. Um, so, uh, we're at this, we have a holiday, the, uh, let's see, city council meeting for ten fourteen. We moved that to, I'll state it to me with the ten fifteenth.
Indigenous. But if we're being politically correct. I'm sorry. Don't vote me on whatever.
So, okay, so let's, let's move on beyond that. And then, uh, should we just move it to the fifth, into the?
Whatever that Monday is, right? It's like the second Monday of, that's what it should be. So, and then it should always just be this, whatever that's.
Move it to Tuesday then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Sarah makes motion, move it to the fifteenth. Uh, because it's the Tuesday.
We can't have it on the Monday.
Because it's.
Office is closed. Oh, yeah. Move our council meeting.
Council meeting.
Oh, yeah. That's, I'm like, why would we move the holiday to Tuesday? Sorry, it's, I just got a new.
We don't have that much.
I, I'm not sleeping very well. I was like a new child.
Okay, if you want to second it, Jackie.
So, Tuesday at same time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. I oppose. A motion carried. Move the city council meeting, uh, from ten fourteen to ten fifteen. Okay, so then we have, uh, Eric, you're up.
I'm on the hot seat.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Kind of like, uh.
It's okay.
Glad to first think. I'm patient.
Absolutely. The first thing that I have that I was just, that was presented to me today is Barb Treader gave me her annual application for her Freedom Fest pre-party for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, she is great to work with. I've never had any headaches with her. Reference the pre-party. She has a wonderful job if I have to change anything on the street or in a parking lot. So, I would ask for a motion to approve the special event application for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, please.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Awesome. Thank you. Laura, I think that's you.
Thank you.
Same shirt will be back for you tomorrow. And then, like, uh, Chief Rushlow, I've also presented my annual report like I do this time every year. I think we're all familiar with who we have for our staff. Our timers are Calvin Cheeto, Doug Rex, that Josh Andrea, and of course, Dan Rushlow. Last year, the city appears investigated nine hundred seventy-eight complaints. Um, the, the most that I've seen come through the city was back probably five or six years, years ago. It was just shy of twelve hundred. So, that we staying right around the thousand. So, with that being said, it's about two point six seven calls per shift when an officer is working for the city appears. The most common calls that we see, accidents, which this number has increased about by two, is twenty-one. Most of them accidents are on Highway twenty-five or Main Street. Agency assists are two hundred seventy-three. Agency assist could be a medical outside of city limits. It could be a motor vehicle lockdown in Genoa, just when we assist other agencies. It can be in our community or outside our community. Callouts for the city appears, I always mark this one because we have take-home squad cars. I was called out sixty-one times during last year just to respond to peers, to help our taxpayers within the community. I'm the one that I take huge part of, that I, that I enjoy the most with this, not with the numbers, but every officer that we have for the city appears. They are first responder certified. So, they respond to all medicals in eastern Morrison County. In Eastern Morrison County, down the Little Rock, the Devil's Corner, whenever we're requested. That number's fifty two. But I think if you took the number of medicals outside the city, it's close to over a hundred medical calls per year. That the officers of peers responds to. And again, it's very unique and I take pride in keeping all officers, um, you know, first responders certified. The other one, if you look all the way to left in the traffic related, that's traffic stops, under ninety two. All about maybe ten of those are Officer Rushlaw, so that shows you how active Mr. Rushlaw is in the evening hours. Just staying out and about with the emergency lights. The busiest time of day is Wednesdays. This has always been like, and I shouldn't say always. But over the last twelve years, on my data, for whatever reasons, Wednesdays are the magic day with a hundred ninety seven service calls. It is.
They always have amazing too. They always are.
And the other one for the last twelve years.
So, so when is that, four hundred days again?
That's a good question. So then the busiest time of the day, this has always been the same, is it's, uh, from fourteen hundred hours to eight o'clock in the evening. And it was three hundred forty one calls of service. The busiest month is March with ninety four. Last year, if I remember right, I believe it was November. It's usually, it's usually November or December, perhaps January. It's usually holidays. But for this last year was ninety four with March, so.
Another tax money back and started a Patty party.
I think Patty's Day was on a Saturday.
With that being said, I'd be like, Mr. Rushlaw, that I have a great counsel. I have great support and that shows with what we get accomplished. By working together and I look forward to working with Laura here in the next, though, my next four years before I retire.
Thank you. Oh, he's been pounding down dogs.
Actually, actually, I'm not. I enjoy my job, but it's, uh, earnings on the wall, so any questions for me?
I just want to say what you may do if you, Eric, and, yeah, the nice thing about Eric, you guys, is I have stuff that comes up that remotely. Deal with either, uh, drugs, questions, or, or help anything. Eric will step right up and help the audio. Just give me the paperwork. I'll make the phone calls and I'll take care of it. Just really helps me out.
How big is like, what are you doing? The kids, did the kids this year already?
Um, Holy Trinity, I have one cup, one class of healthy living and choices. And then in March, we go around to all classrooms with the youngsters at Pine O' Mentory. And then we go through the fourth, fifth and sixth graders, um, more towards the end of the year, but that's scheduled up for March to me with all the young types at Pine O' Mentory.
Thanks, getting excited.
If you see the pictures, it's really cool and we bring in the officers for lunch with the kids. It's actually, it's a very big hit. I walk in there to sit down there. And they want to see on there is gonna be sheriff Larson, um, Mr. Rushlaw's not showing, Dan Rushlaw is, but the kids absolutely love it. We show up just to have lunch with the kids, so.
So every time I'll, I'll tell Hank, when he, I'm like, he's like, I want to see, but I know the police chief, you better. You know him? And I was like, yeah, I know him. And he's like, okay.
Thank you, basically.
Uh, so the next thing, um, are the third, the city council, uh, report. I got a couple of things that I'll be getting better. One thing real quick, I was just gonna say, uh, Laura has always kind of done a mayor, mayor for the day. It's like with the fourth, fifth graders.
Yeah.
So I'd like to schedule that in two weeks. I picked out the person, so I can have you reach out to the school teacher. I can, if you do that. So I'd like to get that covered. I was kind of waiting for you to, to come in to kind of see, kind of some of the fun stuff that we do too, so. And then, uh, the commercial club, just let you, I talked to Paul Prisbilla, the commercial club. Uh, they have a donation that, you know, we've talked about it before, you know, they got some, uh, they have a donation, want to get the peers, they want to work on, work on something. Uh, with us and, um, I did actually bring up the pickleball thing, you know, and maybe work with, uh, with Sarah. Well, you know what? We, we're looking at splash, you know, they, they were, they're kind of pushing towards a splash pad, which is a great idea. Um, and I, I found out that Royalton has a splash pad, so I called up Brenda, the mayor at Royalton. And she was on the committee that put that splash pad in. They put it in, uh, ten years ago and it was a hundred thirty five thousand dollars. And they have water runoff, so they don't rec, you can recycle the water and it's about fifty percent more to recycle the water. It's been treated like a pool or you have to have a, a water pit for it to run off and it's okay. So I don't know if they wanna, I don't know, you know, and I'll talk to the park board about it, but I don't know if they want to stick a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Or into a splash pad of pit.
Not right now.
Yeah, so a pickleball court might be a lot, might be a lot more. I don't know, what do you think, Sarah?
So I was at the commercial club meeting.
Oh, good.
Two weeks ago, I think, and we had talked about that idea of doing something, something bigger, maybe something smaller that's spread out. Something maybe at each of the parks so that there's different things that kids have to do, like, um, a basketball court or a gaga ball court. Um, different types of, just smaller things that say this is a partnership between city and commercial club.
Yeah.
And then like pickleball obviously was spread up and then, um, the splash pad, which I actually heard numbers that were like double that cost.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, that was ten years.
It was ten years ago, so probably would be double, yeah.
Um, somebody mentioned a band shelter, something that, you know, like, uh, a pavilion that creates a park where groups could gather, have concerts. So we'll be some, uh, hard types of things, so they have a committee just looking at those to kind of decide and bring it.
Okay, great. I'll talk to the park board too, uh, next week. I'll bring it up again with those guys. Okay, so I'm glad, I'm glad about that. Okay, so that would be, uh, oh, I just want to touch base. Um, and just clarify something. Last week Zach was in here, or two weeks ago, and he asked to hire two new part-time people. One part-time person from the high school and then one person that knows a little bit more like Nick, like we had Nick there. Um, there was some confusion in the community that, uh, they thought there were two brand new people hiring on top of people that we already hired. And just to clarify that, there were two replaced, two people that have left.
Yes.
So we're not adding any more costs of labor.
No, no, it's just to replace. I did get with that, Zach did message me, um, and I did forward to, to Laura today. Like what they need to have for their like job description and stuff.
I saw the email, I gotta look at it.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think I C C D up too, so I, Zach did get me that, so I did forward that on, so when we get the posting out, it can happen. You know, one for the part-time, two part-timers and then one for more labor.
When?
At least start, have they started yet?
No.
No, we're got to.
We, we're posting for them.
Okay, one thing that we should talk, well, true is the, doing the backgrounds on all city employees that we hired.
Is it for full-timers or part-timers too?
That'd be the question.
I would.
He said we still take on the liability no matter.
Oh, yeah.
Part-timer.
That's true.
And for a twenty five dollar service fee.
Yeah.
And it's something that we should look at, you know, cover any liability.
Well, it's, it's more, we do, they, maybe we can, just go on it and then we can carry.
Yeah, I mean, I would like us to do background. I'd like to, I've been wanting us to do backgrounds.
And I can walk it through with Laura. It was a very easy process with their last one.
And you'd be okay with that, with working through with a hundred?
I would make a motion that we do backgrounds on all full-time or ten employees.
Yeah, um, all in favor, say aye. I, uh, pose a motion carried. Laura, would you agree with just what you see though in central here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, then, um, let's see. Well, the Zach thing, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that, uh, with that, with Zach.
What's that? Are we gonna make higher employees? Can I go through it? Cause we have that option as well, or like return employees from past seasons? So if we have them coming back, they're technically rehires. So are we gonna make them go back through it if they are rehired less than a year or more than a year? So.
I would say new employees because, you know, we're not doing a fresh background on current full-time employees and stuff that can change for any of us. On new hires, full-time or part-time.
Yeah.
That's how we move forward.
That's how I would.
Returning, it's going to be the blessing that there's nothing's changed. You can monitor.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so that would be, that's all that, uh, that's all that I have. The next thing would be updates, so I don't know, Laura, if you have any updates for us at all?
I don't have any.
What was your first, uh, week?
Uh, it's actually, it's really good.
Oh, ah, that's a good to hear.
Well, staff is amazing. Like, I don't know if I could have made it through the first week without Tony and Lydia and Dion, like Eric's. They've been awesome, like, everyone's just phenomenal.
We're, we're, uh, we're, uh, we want everybody to enjoy their jobs and be able to, we, and the other thing is we're trying to promote it's cross-training. So multiple people can do other jobs. So if somebody doesn't need help, then they can come in instead of having, this is all I do or this is all I do. We want to build that people come across and be able to help other people if they got time to help, so. That's really good.
Yeah.
Glad to, glad to hear it. Tony, do you have anything else? As long as you're here, oh. Okay, so.
How about you or anything? I'm, uh, update.
I'm sorry, no.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, so if I can get, since Donnie isn't here.
I'll make a motion ago. I'll second.
Okay. Pause, uh, motion carried to adjourn.